I'd like to call the meeting to order if I could. We're fortunate this evening to have Pastor Mark Carey from Fellowship Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation. We certainly appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, it says in your Word, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen for his inheritance. Behold, the eye of the Lord is on those who fear him and those who hope for his mercy." So, Father, may this board, may all of us be blessed as we look to you for strength, for wisdom, to conduct our work for your glory, and as we trust you for hope and for courage to live lives of holy fear before you. And, Father, I notice on the agenda a recognition of 4H All-Stars. Father, a special prayer blessing upon these young people. May you bless them in their endeavors. And, Father, we thank you for an organization like 4H that impacts young people's lives and communities around this country for decades. Father, we're grateful and we say thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, Fisher, do you listen to the pledge, please?
Please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes? Entertain a motion to adopt as presented.
Move the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
No. Amendment, agenda is adopted. The consent agenda. Tentative agenda items for consent are tabs A and tabs D. Are any proposed changes? Entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman.
To adopt.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
No. Recognition of 4H All-Stars.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for this opportunity. If I could, could I have the All-Stars please come forward to the podium and give us your
I'm Morgan Strickler.
Shelby Frank.
Alina Hackney.
Brandon McDonald.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the reason I ask these individuals to be here tonight is that they have made a singular achievement, and I think I would like to recognize it, and I'm sure the rest of the board would like to recognize it. One of the highest recognitions that a 4H member of Virginia may receive is to be asked to join the Virginia 4H All-Stars. The Virginia chapter of the All-Stars is a service organization to communities, counties, and our state. Nominees must be active as 4H members, completed three years of work as a 4H member, and be at least 15 years old. They shall also display the qualities of leadership, integrity of character, demonstrating high moral standards and high goals, and understanding achievement in both project and service abilities, the ability to work with others, a positive attitude, overall interest in the 4H program, and general interest in organizations and activities for youth development. So, I would like to take this time to commend these young people from Frederick County for their singular achievement, and that's why I've asked them to be here tonight, so that we may also, they are also a testament to their commitment to the 4H and our community. And I thank you all very much for all the hard work that you put in in achieving this recognition. So, thank you. We thank you very much. We understand that you are the future of our community, and we're very proud of what you have accomplished. So, thank you very much.
Well done. This portion of our agenda is, we open for citizen comments on any issue that is not subject to a public hearing later on in our agenda. The Clauser House falls under that category. There is, I think, now consensus to delay action, but we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate benefit of your comments. Who has this? Ms. Garten?
The first person is Larry Webb, who wants to address the Clauser House, and after him is Debbie Martin on the same topic.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Larry Allen Clauser Webb. This is the reason why the Clauser House should be saved. In the year 1764, a party of 18 Delaware Indians crossed the mountains and passed into Frederick County where they divided into two war parties. One party of eight moved on to Cedar Creek Settlement. The other 10 attacked farmers in the area of Clauser's Gap in the neighborhood of then residence of Major John White. On this land, a year earlier, Major White built a small fort and stockade for safety of many families who settled along the North Mountain. The settlers in the area had been warned of dangers and were on their way to the fort when they were attacked by 10 members of the war party. Some of the first were killed in the attack was David Jones and his wife, two old people. Others killed were Mrs. Thomas family, and she and her daughter were taken off, and the old man by the name of Lloyd and his wife and several of his children were killed. Esther Lloyd, her daughter of 13 years, received three time hawk wounds to the head and was scalped and left supposedly for dead. Henry Clauser and two of his sons were killed, and his wife and four daughters were taken. And then, on June 1st, the youngest daughter, who was two years old and was impeding her mother's traveling, when the war party reached the North Mountain, the poor little innocent babe was taken by her heels, her head dashed against a tree, and her brains beaten out and left lying on the ground. Mrs. Clauser and now her three daughters, Sarah, age 10, Elizabeth, age 7, and Mary, age 5, were taken to the Indian town and, after an absence of nearly six months, were released from captivity and returned to home safety. Johan Clauser and his wife were buried beneath what is now the golf course clubhouse that is managed by Shawnee Land. The headstones once stood there, however, they were restored and moved by developers. This information was provided by my uncle Merle Moore, who spent 22 years researching the Clauser family. What we request and what my family, I think, is seeking is, is we be given more time to make this structure safe and for other uses that the county can find need for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Debbie Martin on the Clauser House, followed by Judy Yancy on the same topic.
Good evening. I am Debbie Martin from Stevens City. My grandparents were Walter and Fay Clauser, who lived in Round Hill, Virginia. I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the future of the Clauser Council House located at Shawnee Land. I'm here not for the reason of the connection to my past ancestors, but mainly for the historical significance of the property. With the age of the building predating the Civil War and having the possibility of being 250 years old, I feel the community heritage value of this property is invaluable. When researching the National Register of Historic Places, this property is as old, if not older, than other local saved properties, such as Fort Culver at Culver House on Stonebrook Road, Frederick County Poorhouse in Round Hill, Virginia, and Springdale John Height Home Route 11 near Stevens City. I have read that an attempt was made to have this property added to the National Register, but I feel further research must be done to see if all the guidelines and time deadlines were met in order for the registrar to consider the Clauser home or an attempt was just giving up on. I also want to address the restoration cost. A quote of $30,000 keeps being used, but I am questioning if any other bids were taken to see if the repairs can be done for less. That is usually the proper steps when attempting to have work done instead of just settling on one estimate. There have been discussions that the repairs of the structure to be made safe can be done for far less than the $30,000 quote. I feel that since this structure has survived for at least 150 years, we should slow down, not make rushed decisions until further research can be done regarding obtaining additional repair estimates, establishment of fundraising funds, and the possibility of being acceptance to the National Register of Historic Places. Please give us more time to follow through on these possibilities. We must carry out every effort to save the resource of this history, rich in architecture, and exploration of our early settlers in the western region of our county. Once it is gone, it can never be brought back. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Judy Yancy regarding the Clauser House, followed by Ruth Perrine.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Judy Clauser Yancy. I reside in the Opeckin District, and I will be the spokesperson for my family and self, as well as many friends, on the matter of the Clauser House. Our family also owns property in Shawnee Land, which is in the Back Creek District. It appears that the backside of the building seems to be failing, and largely due to neglect of the owner not maintaining the property, and is mostly water damaged due to lack of guttering. The Clauser House is a part of the Frederick County history, and my family and I, as concerned citizens, as well as ancestors of the Clauser House, are requesting that the fate of this property be given more consideration and hopefully can be preserved. This is not just a sentimental request, but because of the history it holds. With more people being reached by newspaper articles and social media, we feel that other interested people and organizations will learn about the part of the home played in the history of Frederick County, and more options will become available to aid in its being preserved. You have in your packet a revised map outlining the plot that does not include the ball field and golf course that the advisory committee was so concerned about losing, as opposed to preserving a piece of the Frederick County history. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ruth Perrine regarding the Clauser House, followed by Bob Steeg.
I'm Ruth Perrine. I live in Frederick County in Shawnee Land. I'm here tonight on behalf of those Shawnee Land property owners who have no idea the Shawnee Land Advisory Committee voted to demolish the Clauser House at their March 7th special meeting. This meeting was not posted on the Frederick County website, but instead the site showed the May 2nd meeting as the next one to take place. Furthermore, there was no agenda for the meeting, and a small sign posted at each mail house indicating the date and place, but no time. It was posted on the Shawnee Land Advisory Committee Facebook page, but again with no time. This leads me to the lack of communication by the SSDAC with our community members. Their guidelines clearly state, "The Shawnee Land Advisory Committee was established by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors to provide a means for, one, for the property owners to convey major issues and needs to appropriate Frederick County officials, two, for the county to pose issues and questions in order to obtain coordinated input from the property owners, and, three, for disseminating information concerning the overall operation of the sanitary district to the property owners." We have not received a newsletter or any correspondence from the SSDAC since 2010. Outraged at this, four years ago, I started a newsletter, but with taking on the project of saving the old mail house at the entrance of Shawnee Land, I had to cut back on my communication. At every meeting, I would ask, "What are you going to do about informing the residents of Shawnee Land?" to no avail. I have proposed to our SSDAC meetings a possibility of collecting contact information from residents, which I feel the office should have in case of needing to contact a resident. This would be most helpful for Mr. Trinari, the Frederick County Building official, in doing his job as well. An email list could be generated by our secretary and kept confidential by her. She could get information out to the residents from the manager and the SSDAC. The information can be posted at each mail house as well for those who do not have the Internet. The cost would be for some paper and printer ink. Let me explain to you the process of our representation. If a position becomes vacant on the SSDAC, applicants are interviewed by the committee members, and their recommendation is given to the Back Creek Board of Supervisor. This procedure can enable like-minded choices. Before the expiration of the term, oh, shoot.
Go ahead, Tony Shott.
Before the expiration of the term, Mr. Lofton contacts the committee member, and if that member wishes to serve again, the recommendation goes to the Board of Supervisors for appointment. No notice is given to the community members as to a term expiring, or a vacancy, or even that anyone was reappointed. We have four meetings a year that are taped and minutes recorded. We have to wait three months for the minutes to be approved before we can read about what was discussed. We have monthly meetings between the quarterly meetings that are not recorded by the SSDAC, nor are there minutes taken. If one has missed the monthly meetings, they are not abreast of what was discussed at those meetings, and there are gaps in information between the quarterly minutes. I made Mr. Williams aware of our non-democratic system on November 12, 2015 via email. After not hearing back from him, I sent him an email on December 3rd through the Frederick County website. He acknowledged via email that he was in receipt of my previous message and would get back to me. I still have not gotten a response since then. I hope you will take this information into consideration. The decision made by the SSDAC on the Clauser House may not truly represent the wishes of our community. It certainly did not represent the wishes of those who did attend the meetings. Please allow us more time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bob Steeg regarding the Clauser House, followed by Patsy. I'm sorry, I don't think I can do the last name.
Gochinell.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Bob Steeg, and I'm the CEO of the Clermont Foundation in your neighboring county of Clark. The Clermont Foundation manages and funds an historic site, 360-acre farm, many 18th-century buildings, that is owned by the State Department of Historic Resources. Part of the mission of the foundation is to assist other organizations and political jurisdictions with, provide technical assistance and organizational assistance with preservation projects. And I'm simply here tonight to say that we are more than willing to be a partner in a coalition of local organizations, a number of whom I have talked with, the Winchester-Fredrick Historical Society. I've talked with the French and Indian War Foundation. I've talked with my colleagues in the regional office of the State Department of Historic Resources. We are anxious to be part of a coalition to find a practical and sustainable solution for the Clauser House within a definite period of time, if you'll allow us some extra time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Patsy Gochinell, followed by Jim Moyer.
Good evening. I'm Patsy Gochinell, a resident of the Red Bud District. My remarks pertain to the decision of the members of this board will make in regard to the fate of the Clauser House in Shawnee Land. The greatest question ever asked at the beginning of recorded time, "Who do you say that I am?" This question connects the Old and New Testament of the Bible. So, let me continue to connect my relationship to the Clauser descendants and the saving of the Clauser House, and the time of the French and Indian War, and the period during the 1740s, the 1750s, when Frederick County was the frontier of Virginia. I'm a lifelong resident of the community of Winchester-Fredrick County residing off of Sensony Road. In fact, the Red Bud District was carved out of the Shawnee District, but since my place of residence was on the north side of Sensony Road, I was placed in the Red Bud District. However, I lived for over a half-century, 54 years, in a house on a little piece of land, but I don't own this land or house. God does, and I'm just a caretaker and the one who pays the taxes. On this little piece of land, I have a backyard, which I call my Garden of Eden, and my Garden of Eden is where the Shawnee walked, where the great elk roamed, and Washington rode. The winds still come and the winds still blow, but I don't hear the frogs anymore. It is my understanding that the decision regarding the fate of the Clauser House is very time-sensitive. However, it is also my understanding that you cannot save time or make up time. Even Benjamin Franklin said, "Do not squander time, for time is the stuff life's made of." And it is my opinion, there has been too much squandering of the time during these past three years. Therefore, in closing, I believe the words of Benjamin William Penn, of your decision-maker, "Food for thought, as you contemplate not only preserving of the house and the history of the Clauser descendants, but also the rich heritage of this community and nation. Any good, therefore, that I can do, or any kindness or abilities I can show to any fellow creature, let me show it now. Let me not defer it or neglect it, for I shall not pass this way again." Please give us time to consider and to preserve the Clauser House. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Moyer, followed by Michelle Landon, maybe?
Hi, my name's Jim Moyer, and I'm not related to the Clausers at all, but the story is pretty fascinating on the Clauser House. And because it was so fascinating, I made a little website. Google Jim Moyer Clauser House, and it'll pop up, and you'll go on the website, and there's a Google map, and you can use your map or your touchscreen and follow the route that those Indians did. And there were 18 of them, 10 of them hit the Clauser House area. The group was going to go to White's Fort. There's even minutes about Major White warning everybody that these Indians were around the area, so that's recorded. And when the 10 Indians had attacked, the other eight went down to the Star Tannery and Middletown area, and they caused havoc there. It was like a Marlon Brando motorcycle gang coming through, creating massive havoc. George Washington wrote, "500 Indians could take care of 1,500 white men easily." So, but anyway, if you look at that story, it's kind of a neat way to follow the story by looking at the map, and you can trace where they all went, and what they did, and where they did it. But I was looking at the Board of Supervisors website, and one of the, on December 9th, 2009, the Board of Supervisors adopted a set of core values. One is a government concerned with long-range planning that protects our rural heritage. It's definitely worth the effort, whatever delay time you need. I know a lot of these groups need help. Everybody's hurting for money, but even guidance from the board, rather than wait for us to figure things out, we're also looking for help from you all. Anything you would be interested in offering or guidance from a more professional way to attack this. But in that protects our rural heritage, that means you don't want this county to be a generic county like every other county. Not that they're generic, but there's a lot of stories here. And this isn't just about the Clauser House. It's about all these forts that were in this county. When those eight Indians split off to go to the Star Tannery and Middletown area, there's three or four forts right along the Cedar Creek, locations that need to be honored in Frederick County. So, they're all worth a story. And not just the forts in the Clauser House area along Great North Mountain, White's Fort. Those locations need to be looked into, even if just a marker. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Michelle Landon. I'm probably butchering your last name, followed by Betsy Arnett.
Hi, my name is Michelle Landon. I'm on the Shawnee Land Advisory Committee. What you all need to understand is that this has never been a rash decision. We have given two subcommittees three years to figure out a solution to the problem. We were never against saving the house. We did not want to use our Shawnee Land fees to do this. We don't want our fees in Shawnee Land, or the residents' their fees, to go up as well. That being said, the wall is deteriorating even more. At one point, when you went in, you could just open the door and shut it. Now, you have to give it a good shut. It's not as easy. So, it's deteriorating. It is also right beside the ball field. Summer's coming. We've got tons of kids and adults that use that ball field. What happens if the wall collapses? Frederick County is liable for that, should somebody get injured. So, it's never been about us objecting. We've given them three years and two subcommittees to find a solution. So, I mean, at what point do you say enough's enough? I love history as much as the next person. You can't save everything. But there again, we're very concerned about our fees going up, supporting a house that the Shawnee Land residents will never really get any use out of. So, that's my opinion for what it's worth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy Arnett.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Betsy Arnett, and I'm the president of Preservation Northern Shenandoah Valley. We are a nonprofit historic preservation advocacy organization representing Clark, Frederick, the city of Winchester, Warren Page, and Shenandoah Counties. We actually offered more than three years ago to work with the subcommittee on the Clauser House to act as a holding entity where people could make tax-deductible donations that could then be, we would ensure that those donations were used for emergency stabilization repairs of the house. This is a function we successfully performed for stabilization repairs at Greenway Court in Clark County. So, we have some experience in doing this. Unfortunately, we've run into a number of obstacles, not the least of which was a change in leadership with the subcommittee, and as well as some difficulties in drafting an acceptable memorandum of understanding between our organization and Frederick County. Nonetheless, we remain committed. We are willing, still willing, to serve that function, as well as to work with organizations like the Clermont Foundation and other historic preservation groups, local groups, to find a solution. Our intent was to buy some time, to put emergency stabilization measures in place on the house, to buy some time to find a permanent solution for this building, both in terms of its complete restoration and an appropriate use for the building. So, I just wanted to say that we stand still ready. Our offer still stands to help with this process. Our offer still stands to help with this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last person who signed up.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Gen items not subject to public hearing. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Claire Mullet, and I served on the Advisory Committee for four years, and I was the chairman of it. And after that, I thought my time was up. And anyway, I did come back for the Clauser House. I pledged some of my own personal money toward preservation. I don't have any family ties. I just think it'd be a horrible loss to the community to tear down this house, which is fairly stable structurally. I've been in it. I went through the whole process. I was one of the two committee members that formed the Subcommittee to Investigate the Clauser House. And I've got a wealth of information. Anyone that's interested in it, I'd be more than happy to supply it, not the volumes of it, but any particular part of it. But we talked with some people who are very, very interested in helping us. We went down to the state, and they gave us an enthusiastic approval to proceed to the next level. It's a long process, and I'm an old man. I'm 79. I probably won't live to see it happen, but I certainly hope, with all the support that I think is out there for this Clauser House, I think it's one of the true treasures of Shawnee Land. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Any issue on the agenda not subject to public hearing? Anyone? All right, we'll close the public comment portion. For the supervisors' comments, are there any? Supervisor Dunn?
I'd like to hold my comments until we get to Agenda E and talk about this Clauser House, if that's amenable.
Sure. Any other comments? Anyone? All right. Brings us the introduction of new department directors, I believe.
Yes, sir. I would like to introduce, sort of formally to the board and to the public, two department directors. And the first one I need to apologize to because I neglected to do it earlier when she was hired. If Becky Mariner would come forward, she's our new Director of Human Resources, and she came to us from the private sector. She worked at Valley Protein, if I have that correctly, and we are happy to have her, and I just wanted to give her a chance to say hello to the public and to the board.
Hello, welcome, and thank you for allowing me to be here, and your apology is accepted. So I'm really excited to be the Director of Human Resources here, and I'm looking forward to serving the community and to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second new department head, which is what made me remember that I forgot to introduce Becky, was hired more recently. Scott Varner is our new Director of Information Technology, and he comes to us from Gloucester County where he served in that same capacity.
Good evening, members of the board, staff. Just like to say that I'm very happy to be in this beautiful community that you have with these warm people that I've met. I've had a very warm reception, and I'm looking forward to rolling my sleeves up and getting to work and working with all of you to help Frederick County be the best it can be. You already have the best county administrator, so.
I paid him to say that.
I need the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to serving.
All right, that brings us to committee appointments. Northwestern Community Services Board, it looks like we have a resignation for your term. We have any thoughts there? All right, we'll continue to work on that one. Historic Resources Advisory Board, I'd like to bypass. Parks and Recreation Committee, a member-at-large, Kevin Anderson. Any thoughts? We'll work on that one then. Social Services, Joanne Leonardis of Red Bud.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've chatted with Mrs. Leonardis. We've had a good conversation. Her term ends June 30. We are looking for a replacement, somebody that can be empathetic to those that are less fortunate than we are. And so if there's some interest, they should contact either me or Mrs. Garten, and we're looking for a replacement. For those of you that know somebody that's empathetic to those that are literally dirt poor, we would like to know that person, and we could help him. That person, he or she, can go and help the community. So we're still working on that, and we'd like to have some public feedback on that.
Thank you, sir. Winchester Regional Airport, Troy County Representative.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to reappoint Paul G. Anderson Jr. to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority.
Motion to reappoint, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Paul G. Anderson Jr. is reappointed to Winchester Regional Airport Authority. Community Policy Management Team, it's like we have a private provider representative. Anyone thoughts? We want to work on that one. And Leslie, yes?
Typically with the CPMT, that board recommends replacement of members to the Board of Supervisors, and if you look further in your agenda, you'll see there's a letter where both of the representatives were recommended unanimously for reappointment.
All right, so Bowman and Stewart. Okay, I didn't get that far, on the other page. All right, so how's the board want to handle that one?
They, both individuals be reappointed?
Motion to reappoint both, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Chairman, should we also include that? I see there's also a request to appoint Mr. Jay Tibbs as the county administration representative replacing Chris. Should they be part of that same motion?
Do all three at one time? I'd be amenable to that.
Second, Mr. Hurst?
Second, yes.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board.
Mr. Chairman, we have a notation in there that the Tourism Board has recommended the appointment of Andy Guyrisom to fill the seat of Bill Hoddle, who will be stepping down, and the appointment of Mary Braun to fill the seat of Rebecca Ebert, who will be stepping down as well, and the reappointment of Sharon Farrenhold, and I so move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? This is a joint appointment with the City of Winchester, so they'll take action as well before anything happens. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we'll accomplish those. Development Impact Model Committee. We currently, we're waiting for a response from Planning. We're okay on that one. Should we wait until they're all confirmed? What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, the appointments don't expire until June 28th, so we certainly do have two meetings prior to that.
Okay, so why don't we see if we can follow up from administration on those? Is that good? We all comfortable with that? All right, so I think that brings us to the end of the committee list. Request from the Commissioner for a refund.
Yes, sir. You have a request in your packet from the Commissioner of the Revenue dated May 2nd, 2016, to authorize the Treasurer to refund Shen Valley Lime Corporation the amount of $6,281.64 for real estate taxes from 2013 through 2015. The refund is the result of inadvertently duplicating billing to real estate taxes on the same property. So you would need to approve the refund and appropriate the funds accordingly.
Now, would the board like to handle this request?
I would make a motion that we approve the request for the $6,281.64 and also the supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve the refund and the appropriations, are second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right, brings us to the Public Works Committee. Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, Public Works met on Tuesday, April 26, 2016. We didn't have any items for action, however, a number of things were brought for updates and information. One of them was the demolition of the Shawnee Land Clauser House. We also had updates on the Round Hill Fire Station landfill and the usual, well, Stonebridge Boulevard and the county office alleyway, which was resurfaced, and also the North Mountain Fire Hall bunk room. But I think the main thing, reason this was removed from the consent agenda was, I guess, for some further discussion on the Shawnee Land issue up there with the Clauser House. So I don't know how you want to proceed or go with this. I can just tell you, Public Works was not asked to do anything. It was presented only for information, and since that time, there's been a lot of stuff come up. So I have some thoughts on that, but I'd just like to see where the rest of the board wants to go. I just mentioned Public Works didn't really look at this any other way than accepting it for information.
Okay. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dunn?
In the last, about a month ago, the Winchester Star published an article on the Clauser House. I've been here for approximately 20 years. It's the first time that I've known anything about that Clauser House. I've been told that there was an article that was published earlier, three years ago, but I never saw such an article. I have a background in history, and this area in the 1700s was an area where to survive was something that was significantly more difficult than it is today. What I hope, can you hear me? What I hope to do is the following. I want to lay out a reason. So first of all, for the record, and for those that are looking at this, if you're looking at these comments, please go to the beginning of this session where there were a number of comments made by other speakers that are not tied here. So if you're doing research on this, recognize that my comments are in conjunction with some other comments that were made earlier in the same meeting. Having said that, I believe that there should be a delay on the demolition of this property. This house is 200 years old approximately. I was in this house with Mr. Strausneider about a week ago. It does need some work done. In Shawnee Land already, you've had the unfortunate destruction, the key word unfortunate, of a fort that was there which had gun ports. So 200 years ago, this area and going home would have been a matter truly sometimes of life and death. They don't make 250-year-old houses anymore. This house, in my opinion, needs to be looked at more, in deeper depth, before it's demolished. So I'm going to go and ask if the board will consider a delay until the end of the year so that others can get together and work. I've had a call, I had an email from Lynn Schmidt, whom I believe is the president, and so if she is listening to this or is hearing this, I appreciate your comments. She laid out her concerns from Shawnee Land on the problems that they've had for the last three years, similar to the woman that was speaking here earlier from Shawnee Land Advisory Committee as well. However, having lived here for a long time, this is brand-new to me. Since I made some public comments approximately a few weeks ago, I've been inundated with phone calls, I've been inundated with emails, I've not yet had a response to those emails. There are people here in the audience today who email me, "Thank you," and I've not had a chance to get back to you because of the volume that I've received. Many of you have lived here for a long time, and you're saying since you've lived here for a long time. I think that this is something that is of unique history. This house and its surrounding history goes back to the American Revolution. And so I'd like to see if we can just have a consensus to delay this demolition until the end of the year. As I've told you earlier, I'm going to be tied up for the next two weeks because of other business, but I would like to go and see if we can get the people in this audience and others who have said they have an interest, focus them on saving this house with a concrete plan on raising money, providing an avenue of where it should go, what it should do. I do not think that the Shawnee Land residents need to bear this cost alone. I think that's unfair to them, so I'm trying to relieve them of that concern. And if the group can get together and provide monthly reports to the board, that might provide an incentive to them to continue to work hard. That was a suggestion made by Mrs. Slaughter, which I appreciate, and we can work together to see if there's a solution. I know that the Shawnee Land people have worked on this for three years. I would simply ask those in Shawnee Land to give me to the end of the year to try to find a solution that works. The public article in the paper by Mr. Chaney has created a lot of interest, and so I would ask to see if we can just delay this. I personally give you my word, Mr. Chairman, that I will do all I can to have a good, favorable process. I have an engineering background, I have a history background. I'll just go through the process to see what the questions are, how to address them, and then try to find a solution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start, Mr. Chairman, one other thing. This property is eligible or has been designated as a potential historic site, so that alone is significant, and I think that's something that needs to be considered. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
If I may, I certainly appreciate Supervisor Dunn's comments, but also it should be noted, as Michelle Landon pointed out, Mr. Van Meter is here, who also serves on the committee, that will bear out the fact that, as she has said, and it's been noted, that for three years, three years, two subcommittees have been given the opportunity to work on this, to come up with a solution with not even a hint of a plan as to how anyone would accomplish the goal. Now, as she has said, no one is against saving the house, putting it to some good use, but no one, no one, after all the research has been done, has come forward with even a scant plan of how that would happen. So they took it as there was little interest in it, because I have not gotten outpouring from the residents of Shawnee Land saying, "Save that house." And it's been on the agenda, those meetings that have been publicized and held, the quarterly meetings, the monthly meetings, there's been so much information floated around, and obviously the Star's circulation three years ago wasn't what it is today, or else the article wasn't of interest three years ago like it is today. So I don't have a problem, and I don't know that the Shawnee Land District Committee has a problem with someone trying to come up with a plan, but again, there needs to be an end game here. There needs to be some goals set. What I would recommend, and I'll put this in the form of a motion if need be, that this, as we've heard Supervisor Fisher say, that the committee considered it, they've been working on it for three years, they made a decision, they passed it on to the Public Works Committee, which is the protocol. The Public Works Committee got no input, no citizen input, no inquiries, so the Public Works Committee obviously had to assume that the decision made by the Senator District Committee was viable. So I would make a motion that this issue be pushed back to the Public Works Committee for their discussion and that they take Mr. Dunn's suggestions, maybe Mr. Dunn can meet with the committee and let them come up with some kind of plan of action that will satisfy everyone and get all the input in, bring it back to the Public Works Committee, which will bring it back to this board for some kind of decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Lofton took the words out of my mouth.
Sorry.
If I may comment, I think there's some bigger issues here that need to be looked at. I think Mr. Williams is going to have to be involved beyond the historic aspects. There's liability issues, there's safety issues, there's access to the site issues. It's not simple, even if you would come up with the money to restore the house. You've got some legal issues, ownership of property, it just, it's nothing very simple. So I think this motion is much in order.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add, I think-
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add, I think one of the most exciting things to come out of this discussion this evening and the remarks that were made by citizens today is citizen engagement in an issue that affects the county in one way or another. I just wish that there were as many people paying attention to every issue that was brought before this board. I'm really excited to see it, and I hope those folks who have expressed an opinion regarding this are also willing to stay abreast of other issues that affect Frederick County and its citizens. I am certainly in favor of some, any of the approaches that have been suggested to give us time to examine ways that the building can be saved. Despite some comments from supervisors, I was not there when the house constructed, but I would still like to see it preserved. Thank you.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Sir, Supervisor Dunn.
I've been a private citizen, as most people have, and so I am sympathetic to Mr. Lofton's comments. Sometimes people attend board meetings and publicly comment at board meetings because it's the only time they are, they recognize that there is an issue. And so there may be subcommittees that meet, but I would dare say that there are many people that do not know that an issue is coming up until it comes up in a board meeting. As a private citizen, I've sat at that podium and talked more than once on issues, but I only was aware of it after a subcommittee met, and so this was the forum to do that. I am looking for a specific time, or at least an agreement on time. And so Mr. Lofton's comments on going back to the subcommittee and then for further items, I may be amenable to that, but I don't want to have a surprise where the subcommittee meets and then all of a sudden, there's a quick turnaround. I'd like to have the time to say to this group of people and others that are interested, let's get together with a plan. As Mr. Fisher said, I agree, there ought to be a listing of what needs to be done. Here are the problems that are listed. The president of Shawnee Land laid out some issues. Mr. Lofton has laid out some issues on liabilities, Mr. Fisher has. I've had conversations with Mr. Williams in the last week and a half on the liability issues. So we can address the issues and then try to come up with a plan to resolve that. I understand that for both Mr. Lofton and for the people in Shawnee Land, it's been a three-year process. I'm sympathetic to that, but I would ask you to have the courtesy to say, let's have to the end of the year to try to resolve the problem. If it cannot be resolved, if it's obvious it can't be resolved in a shorter period of time, I'm not looking to just run the clock to the stake of running the clock. But I am looking to say, to buy a reasonable amount of time so that various organizations can go and do what they need to do, to come up with a viable plan, concrete action, action points, and as Mrs. Slaughter said to me earlier, with a monthly report that gives everybody an incentive to do some things that likely would begin in the beginning of late May or early June because of other issues, which I can't go into right here. So Mr. Lofton, I mean, that's my comment on what timeframe, if it goes back to the Public Works Committee, are you, you know, looking at, can you go and make a commitment to have nothing occur until the end of the year or until there's an agreement that, yes, nothing can be done, we agree on that, that's fine. But I just want to prevent a surprise, waking up in the morning and finding out that, you know, the house has been demolished because of some action that I'm unaware of.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Sir.
If I may respond, to Supervisor Dunn, I'm not suggesting that the time frame be short or long. What I'm suggesting is that generally, there's a structure and a protocol to issues that come before the board. And as Supervisor Fisher has pointed out, it was not, there was no input at all at the Public Works Committee level. So what I'm asking is, put it back down to the Public Works Committee. The committee can then decide what structure, timeframe, and all that they would like to see encompassed in your plan. So it doesn't take off the table your timeframe. It just says that the Public Works Committee will have purview over that structure so that they can make sure that things keep moving along, although I'm sure you will. But it provides a structure that then this can all be debated, discussed, and then a decision brought forth to the board where we can make a decision based upon all the input.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your input. I believe, I believe, I'm not positive, okay, but I believe that your timeframe might be much shorter than what I think can be done. And so that's why I made the comment on to the end of the year. I'll be glad to work with you, okay? But I want to buy the time so a reasonable person can reasonably come up with a plan to solve this problem with concrete steps on what we need to do, when we need to do it, et cetera. I'll work with you, with Mr. Fisher, who's chair of this subcommittee. I just don't want to be forced into a two-week, four-week, six-week type timeframe. But I think that in that timeframe, we can lay out this is what it's going to take time-wise and pieces to be put together. And I would not be able to begin working on that until the beginning of June because of other issues.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Sir.
Again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to set a timeframe. I'm just trying to set a structure for this conversation to take place. And I think Public Works Committee would be the structure for that. They can allow you a year. They could allow you two years. I'm not telling them, and I'm certainly not indicating what kind of timeframe I would like to see. I'm just saying that I think that's a proper structure in order for this issue to move forward and be brought before the board with some kind of action to be taken. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Lofton.
If I could, one moment.
Yes.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment.
Wells.
I am a member of the Public Works Committee, and I agree with Mr. Lofton. I think this needs to come back to the Public Works Committee for their consideration and review. Mr. Dunn, I understand your concern, but it bothers me a little bit because it puts the onus on me as though I'm going to take a shotgun and shoot this project and surprise you, as you said. I can assure you that there have been no surprises, and there won't be any surprises. It's a good committee who will work hard. These are people who are citizens of Frederick County and are concerned about historic resources, including myself, and would certainly like to see those structures saved, if possible. But I do think it needs to go back to committee and have that opportunity to do that. You're certainly welcome to attend that meeting and put your two cents in and so forth and so on. But I really believe that it needs to come back there for those folks to discuss it. Then that's brought back to the Board of Supervisors, and they get to decide whether they would like to extend or shorten or whatever. But we come back with the information for them to be able to deal with and for you to be able to deal with. So that's my, I don't want the folks to assume that the Public Works Department is, a bunch of guys are going to sit up there and go, "Ha, we got you now." That's not going to happen. That's not what we're about. We are Frederick County citizens, just like you are. And in some cases, this is the first we've heard about this. So we need to go back and review it. It hasn't come before me, and I'm on the committee. This is the first time I've dealt with it. So I need some time to look into it, too. But I certainly understand what you said tonight. I think it's important. Member of Historic Resources and all those different things and all the reenactment groups, I think those are great. And so you have a supporter, but I think we need to go into and look at it in a governmental fashion, if you will, and come up with a plan and see what we can do as a group and work it out. It's transparency. You can call me or call any of the other folks and be happy to talk with you about it. At least, that's how I feel.
Mr. Wells.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Williams, I have a question for you, sir. If I understand, and I'm trying to get up to par with what's been going on, plus information, but for this building to be demolished legally and technically, does that not require, from information I've gained just today, the Board of Supervisor's approval or not?
The board could act on it. It's not actually the disposition of real estate proper, since it's just a fixture on the real estate. It really becomes an issue of what the board is comfortable having delegated to staff. But certainly, if the board wants to have a role in that, it is absolutely the board's prerogative to do so.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to understand, because I, you know, the sanitary districts assigned responsibility, so that may very well just fall totally under their purview, is what I'm hearing.
The board is ultimately the governing body, the sanitary district as well. So the answer really is the same either way. The board can exercise the prerogative if it so chooses.
So it sounds like to me, in lieu of information here, that this board probably should make some decision here on this. It's my opinion of what I'm hearing.
We have a motion on the floor.
Understand, but I'm trying to.
Advisory.
I'm just trying to understand the process. It goes back to Public Works, then it would come back here.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fisher, perhaps what the board could do is, I think, my sense of the motion, it's before the board, is it's to direct the issue of what to do with this back to the committee, that no action, no other action be taken by staff until the committee makes a recommendation and refers it back to the board for action. So I think the motion effectively would be the board's exercise of that prerogative to say, "We're going to decide what happens."
Thank you for getting me where I wanted to go.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
Not to belabor a point, so first, Mr. Wells, thank you for your comments. And just so, you know, all of you know, I think that Mr. Wells is a very honest man. We've had, he's a Boy Scout, so am I, so, you know, Eagle Scouts count. So, you know, my concerns were that if no action had been taken here today, I had been told, so just, I had been told that it would have been the prerogative of the Public Works Director to take down that building when and when he saw fit. That's what I was trying to prevent. With Mr. Williams' comments saying that if it goes back to the Public Works Committee, if we have a discussion there, to lay out a plan, et cetera, and then it comes back to the board for a final disposition of whatever the Public Works Committee recommends, and then this board makes, you know, whatever decision is appropriate, that I can support. So if that's, as Mr. Williams just stated, is what has been laid out here, I can support that for going back to Public Works, to have the time necessary to go and lay out a game plan, which will be less than one, two, or three years significantly, and then try to come up with a solution that works. So I'd support Mr. Lofton's motion based upon the comments of Mr. Williams, my comments, and Mr. Lofton nodding his head.
Thank you, Sir. Supervisor Hess.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to, offer an amendment to Supervisor Lofton's motion. And that would be that something to the effect that the final decision regarding whether to demolish or not to demolish the Clouser House be made by the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
And a second. So is there any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? I think it's a given, I think it's legally required.
It goes to the committee, I mean, it may be a given. I'm just trying to clarify that portion. I don't have a problem. I think it should go back to the committee, but that the final decision be brought to the Board of Supervisors.
We've made a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.
No.
One, no.
Two.
Two. Thank you.
It's redundant.
So the motion carries. So that brings us to the main motion, and that is to forward this issue back to Public Works Committee to recommend to the board how to proceed. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just reinforce what Supervisor Wells said, and that was, the publication of all meetings is done so in the press and also on the website. And any citizen, any member is, you know, regardless of whether a citizen of Frederick County or Winchester, the meetings are all open to the public. So I would encourage you, if you want to hear what goes on in Public Works, if you want to hear what goes on in Finance Committee, those are certainly open for anyone to come. And they are transparent. So that would conclude my comments.
Further discussion? You ready to vote? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Issue sent back to Public Works. That brings us to a public hearing on proposed ordinance salaries of the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, sir, there are two sections of the code by which the method for the board to determine its annual salary may be determined. Frederick County has been using Code Section 15.2-1414.3, which provides that the board must hold a public hearing and pass an ordinance which sets the salaries for the board members to begin July 1 of the following fiscal year. And that action needs to be taken between May 1 and June 30 of each year. So before you is the public hearing required and a resolution that sets the board's salaries for the following year at the same amount that they currently are.
Questions or comments, anyone? It's a public hearing. We're going to hold the public hearing. Get a shot if you want it ahead of time.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no, if there's citizen comments, I'll make some comments after that.
Thank you, sir. So it's a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak concerning this issue, which is the proposed ordinance which sets the salaries of the Board of Supervisors for the coming year? Anyone at all? If you'd come to the podium, it's your name, magisterial district. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
I'm not in any of the magisterial districts, I'm a city resident.
Fine, sir.
Jim Moyer.
Welcome.
But give yourself all a thousand-dollar raise if you save the Clouser House.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone at all? I'm going to close the public comment portion. Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Chairman. The county has two choices, or there are two laws, and the current law limits the amount of money that can be paid for a public salary. There's another option, which I believe Mrs. Garten and Mrs. Williams have, to provide flexibility for that. For this year, I'm going to concur with the salaries that are outlined. But for next year, in a year, I'm going to make a suggestion that the Board of Supervisors be given a significant pay raise of approximately $15,000 per year, which would bring the Board of Supervisor's salaries from $9,000 to $24,000, the vice chairman to 25.2, and the chairman to 25, or 26.8. The reason I'm making the comments now is to put on the record for the next year an opportunity for you citizens to determine whether we're worth that or not, you to contact, as I say, we support or oppose that. But I'll say this, I've been on this board for approximately seven months. First week, I had a 700-page document to read, to make an intelligent vote on. I've worked probably in the neighborhood of 35 hours a week on Board of Supervisor items. I'm also a business owner, and I spend another 40-plus hours a week helping clients in financial planning. The time that we've had just today has taken up a significant amount of time. I am glad to have participated in that. It's that type of item. These other board members as well place significant time that you never see or hear about when either dealing with constituents, dealing with meetings. I'm going to pick on Mr. Lofton for a second. Mr. Lofton goes to a Shawnee Land meeting. He then talks to people after that meeting. That takes time from him. And I would imagine that most people here will spend three or four nights a week dealing with board-related issues. This is the third meeting we've had this week, and I have another one, you know, on Friday. So in Fairfax County, board salaries are $90,000, and they have a staff of over $100,000. This board has no staff. Mr. Hess, to pick on Mr. Hess for a second, his staff is Mr. Hess. He doesn't have anybody else to help him, nor does anybody else. In Loudoun County, board members have a $100,000 salary, and they make about $40,000 a year, and the chairman makes $60,000 a year, and that's considered a part-time job. This county makes $9,000 a year. This board here is essentially the board of directors for the county, and you currently pay this board not, less than $100,000 a year on a budget that runs to $365 million a year. That's significant. So whether I'm elected or not when I run again, or my successor, he deserves a higher pay, in my opinion, than what is currently being done. This is not just pay me because I want money, but I'm trying to lay out for you the amount of work that's done in this job, and I believe that that job deserves a higher pay. So I've just laid this out, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to comments back and forth. I'll probably hold a public. I'll probably hold a public town hall meeting in the middle of July, in the middle of June, I'll look forward to comments at that time, but you can let us know whether you think my comments are reasonable, or not reasonable, why or why not, and I look forward to a discussion with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Others?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just make a motion to approve the resolution for the salaries that's in front of us, as is.
Motion to approve the ordinance that leads to no changes, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just like to make a comment, that I'm not sure that there is any amount that we would be willing to consider that would compensate somebody for a full-time job, that, and the commitment it takes to sit on the Board of Supervisors, and it's just my opinion that it takes a servant's heart to serve on this board, and I'm grateful that there are people like the other members of the board, and the members of the various committees and commissions of the county, that are willing to be true public servants.
Thank you, sir. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One other comment that I think the public just needs to recognize is that if you are retired, and you have a salary, or if you're older, or if you're independently wealthy, or if you have your own business, you have the flexibility. But if you work for somebody else, or have to be at work at 8:00 and get off at 6:00, it's much more difficult. So if you want a board that gives, that gives a person that serves on that board the opportunity to not fit either old, or independently wealthy, or self-employed, then that was the reason I made my earlier comments. Thank you.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
I've, I worked for nine years when I was serving on this board, and I, I chose to run for election, to serve the county, and give back to what it has given to me. I think you're walking on a fine line when you start getting the salaries and stuff too high. In reference to Fairfax, we don't need full-time employees working for the citizens, we need citizen members that are paid part-time, and I, I think there's a real fine line there. The citizens need to run the government, and not people that are getting paid a bunch of money.
Further discussion, anyone? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries, unanimous, be no changes. Bring us the board liaison reports, are there any? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. As liaisons, there's a Social Services Board that attend their monthly meetings, and each month, they have a presentation by a different department of the Social Services team. This last one, presentation was made on the foster care, and the statistics from foster care, and the one item that I took away from that is that there is a need for foster homes in this county, that a lot of times, it is getting so that we don't have the opportunity to place a child in a foster home in the county, which means we have to place it outside the county, which increases the cost for doing so. So I'm asking that if anyone out there that is interested in serving as a foster parent, please contact the Frederick County Social Services Department, and let them know of your desire, and they will give you all the information you need to tell you how that can become possible, and give you all of the information you need as to what is expected of you in doing that. So, thank you.
Other liaison reports, anyone? Thank you. This is the portion of the meeting where we set aside time for citizens to comment on any issue whatsoever. Would anyone like to address the board on any issue? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the comment portion. Board of Supervisors' comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the folks who came here tonight, like Mr. Hess did, it's always nice to have folks that are here to talk about situations, you're welcome to come anytime, sometimes it gets lonely up here, so we'd like to see more of you, attend our meetings, that would be great, and state your concerns and your suggestions as to how we can do a better job. So I'm glad you were here, welcome, and we'll see you again, hopefully.
Supervisor Slaughter.
I know we made comments on Monday night about the service learning projects, but we had a real treat to have the high school students from all of our local high schools, James Wood, Millbrook, and Sharando, and the projects were truly amazing. If you weren't here and were able to see them televised, it was a real treat, as I think Mr. Hess made a remark about, I think our future is in good hands with, with the youth of, and the students of our, our high schools. Amazing. The pamphlets that they held, handed out to us were so professionally done, and, and I know a lot is attributed to technology, but it, it has really come a long way since poster board when I was in high school, I'll have to say, so.
You had poster board.
We had poster board. At any rate, it was such a treat.
Thank you. Others?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may, to echo Supervisor Slaughter's comments, I will say that those presentations really did have a big impact, because now Supervisor Wells is tweeting all the time. He's worse than Donald Trump, I think.
Yes.
Let's move on.
Yeah.
Other comments, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank the rest of the board for, you know, the comments, the interaction on the Clauser House, and for the comments on the salary issue, we'll discuss that over the course of the year, but I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for adjournment.
To adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you all for your time and attention.